Welcome to Padnet Presents. I'm Derek Simpson, the host of the show. And it's a very special opportunity to interview three people that I think the world of. And I'm sure you will too, after you hear the conversation that we're about to have. In Long Beach, in the month of June, we had what was called one of the most historical elections of all time. Both because of our mayor being the first Latino and the youngest, and first openly gay, but also because five of the city council districts turned over. And we had new city council persons coming on board. And three of those were women. And those ladies are here with us today. And I want to share with them and with you what's been going on in these first eight weeks in office. So that we can not only hear about what's going on at city council, but also what's going on in their lives has changed since they've taken on such an important responsibility in our community. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
It's so good to see you. We're looking all colorful and smiles and energized. And here at Padnet and Long Beach Community Action Partnership, let me just say what an honor and pleasure it is to have you here. Certainly, starting with the first district with Lena and all that you're doing there. And Stacy and I have known each other for years from YMCA days. And Suzy, I've had the honor of meeting you recently. And glad that you traversed everything you had to do to get here this morning to do this show. But let's start with the first question. And when you think about taking office, and we share with those who are watching, what's been some of the greatest challenges that you guys have faced in these first eight weeks of office? What do you think, Suzy?
Well, I think the biggest challenge by far has been figuring out how we are going to fund all of the really valuable programs and services that are presented to us as members of the city council. Budget constraints and budget limitations really do impact what we're able to do. And one of the biggest challenges for me has been figuring out how we can do our best with the limitations that we have on our budget to bring great programming to the city.
Now, I know Stacy, when we talk budget, we're talking your language. Because that's something that you do in terms of your day-to-day job. And when you jumped into this whole budget scenario, what did you find?
You know, it was an amazing experience to be able to use those skills in a new environment. And I was honored to be selected as a new council member on the Budget Oversight Committee. And the way that the Budget Oversight Committee works to ensure that the priorities of all constituents in all districts are given a seat at the table. So that we hear out all of our options and then really figure out where we can go from here. And I think that one of the things that us three ladies are committed to is finding new revenue sources. Because when we take a budget, you start with what you had last year, and there isn't much more available. And so the decisions were really tough. We found some really creative ways. Suzy and I partnered together to find some public safety things. Suzy has done an excellent job as the chair of our Public Safety Committee in ensuring that those programs and priorities were at the table. And I think that Lena and I have talked about some opportunities in our districts to find ways that businesses and government can work better together. So that next year, the decisions won't be as tough. Because hopefully, we'll have some more revenue to talk about.
Now Lena, you, although you weren't on council before, you worked in a council office.
Yes.
Unlike, I guess, any of our other two guests here. Were there any observations that you could make, kind of being behind the scenes in that whole budgeting process, that you may have found differently now, being one of the key players in the process?
Yes. It's all up to me now. So it was a huge challenge for me, because I don't talk that language. And I appreciate Councilmember Mungo's expertise, because she's helped us learn a lot through the process. And it was very challenging for me, because it is difficult to find what priorities are going on in your district and how to not, you know, prevent us from cutting anything else in other areas. And also understanding the overlying themes that all of us have. Public safety, parks programming, and better business modules. And so it was a very challenging process, but I'm glad we got through it. We passed it a week early, thanks to all of our work and the mayor's, you know, precedence and tone and, you know, what he set for us. And I think it was just, it was amazing. So it's really great.
Sticking with you, ladies, when we talk about surprises, I mean, I know you had everything, you had a campaign strategy. You know, you had strategies for everything. Now you're in office. Are there any big surprises that, just like, wow, I didn't expect that? You know, you kind of see it on paper, or you hear it, you know, in the halls of City Hall, possibly. But were there any things that just popped out at you that, wow, I wasn't expecting it to happen that way? No?
You gonna start with me?
Sure.
You know, I would have to say, I always knew that we had a dedicated city staff. But it wasn't until I assumed office that I realized how hardworking our staff really is. You know, I think government workers, being one myself, often get a bad reputation for maybe not being hardworking or dedicated, which is absolutely a fallacy. But in regards to the city of Long Beach, I mean, the work that I've seen our staff do, we recently had the High Surf advisories in my district. And, you know, I was out there late at night when the high tide came in. And those staffers were working out there at midnight, had not gone home to see their families, making sure that those homes were protected. I am surprised, pleasantly surprised by the level of dedication.
Any from your perspective, Stacy?
You know, a lot of what we talk about, I'm also a government employee for the County of Los Angeles. And a lot of what we talk about is how the workforce is turning over, and our baby boomers are retiring. And in Long Beach, our employees have stayed. And so we may be new to the council. We have a lot of historical information and institutional knowledge available to us. And it's often fun when we get ideas from constituents. We can sit with the city manager, sit with the city attorney, and he can say, "The last time I saw something like this was under Mayor Soto," or Mayor... And it's a length of information. And they keep every file, and there's good, solid background. And then we can bring a fresh perspective to something that may have been not a priority then, but with the changing times and the young families moving in, now may be the time to take those things into fruition.
I think what you say is important. Because on the one hand, in any organization, even ours, the institutional knowledge is very important. But at the same time, in order for anything to thrive and live, you gotta have that injection of new ideas and new blood. So that combination sounds like it's working out well. Now, it would be hard to, I would imagine, surprise you, Lena, given that you were in the trenches there for a while, but something must have popped up.
I get surprised every day. I mean, yeah, I was there for about five years, but I'm still surprised. You know, I had the city's very first Spanish community budget meeting. And I was surprised that it was our first, because we're such a diverse city. But I was also very surprised at how many of our folks are bilingual. And they're not necessarily Latino, but they're bilingual. And so it was really surprising to me. And it showed that, you know, we can do things a little bit differently. So that was very surprising. And also just the way we've been working on the council together. I hope that we continue to do that. I know we're not gonna always agree on everything. But I think the way we've been working on the council has been very strategic, but it's the best for the community. You know, not the inner fighting that unfortunately we've seen before. It's been, it's been very, very good.
Yeah, when we were sitting right before we began the show, I talked about the synergy. It sound, you know, you just feel a certain energy being here with you, that you seem to be very open-minded, you get along really well. Is that really how it is with you guys? I mean, I don't expect you to say, "No, we hate her."
Well, I think it's that way with the three of us. But I think that's, it's that way with all nine members of the council. I mean, I would have to say, you know, a lot has been made about the age of this new group. And I'm one of the older members of the group, so sometimes I take offense to all those articles. But, but I would have to say, given the priority or the significance that age has had, it's a very mature group. I mean, when you're talking about the level of human interaction, everyone, I think, understands this is a long-term relationship. And we all have good individual relationships with one another. I can call any council member tomorrow and say, you know, "How do you feel about this or that that's happening in your neighborhood or your district?" And I think we have that relationship. We've really set the tone for that level of maturity. We may not always agree, but I think it's important that, you know, we're not gonna hold it against one another for four years if we don't agree. That's just not constructive.
If I'm not mistaken, the mayor even had sort of a retreat for you guys originally. How did that go?
I thought the retreat was an excellent opportunity for us to come together and talk about the big vision. I think that one thing that all of us really care about is our role here. There's a question later that we were gonna potentially discuss, that maybe I'll bring up now, which is the question you get the most, that maybe you don't have an answer for. I think that all of us have been so strong in our communities for so long, people have often asked us, "What you're gonna run for? What are you gonna do?" And I know that I personally had said, "I will never run for public office." It's not the running, it's not the being a public official, the being a councilwoman is such an honor. It really is. I don't know that we all enjoyed the running for office as much. It was quite a journey and a learning opportunity. And some types of learning are uncomfortable at times, and they really push you to grow and change in your own skin. But I think that what you'll see among all of us is, none of us are looking towards anything further than now. We are talking about issues now, for Long Beach now, to ensure that this community that we live in and we love will be great forever. We're not making decisions, because one day we wanna run for something else. Each and every one of us is here, because we care about this, which I think is the most important thing when coming together on ideas. Because none of us are looking for credit. We're looking for collaboration. And I think that the retreat really was able to allow us to talk about that in a meaningful way.
I think that's important. We've heard so much about that. This is just the first step, and then people are looking to move forward. But there's nothing more important than the present. So I can really appreciate, you know, that perspective. So, so you've gone through that whole election process, the whole campaign process.
Yeah.
And, and now you find yourself at that first meeting in the council chambers. What was that like? That must have been somewhat surreal, I would imagine.
It was nerve-wracking. I mean, it was, you know, again, being behind the member most of my years at City Hall, now being the member, it was nerve-wracking. And, you know, I know we had a good rapport before that going in, but it's, you know, all eyes are on us. And we, it was our time to really represent our district. And I think each of us did a great job, you know, whether it was Belmont Shore area, or Eldorado Park, or downtown. We all represented our communities to the best. And I think we'll continue to do that. But it was, it was a great, it was a great feeling, being up there.
Before I allow you two ladies to answer the same question, we're gonna take a quick break. And we're gonna come back and share with you who are watching, a great conversation that we're having with the newest of our city council members, which all happen to be ladies that are making a great difference in our community. So we'll be right back. Hi, I'm Derek Simpson, Executive Director of the Long Beach Community Action Partnership, here at the WeLab satellite location.
Padnet, with them being the media company that they are, with entrepreneurs that we have, that can use such innovations, you know, to better their business. And I think also the vision that WeLab is being given by Padnet with their advertising, and then vice versa, I think is very important for the two of us to be here together.
So one thing Padnet offers is for us to make it what we want it to be. It's our voice, it's our channel. And this gives another whole group of people that may not have gone down to the library, that may not have gone all the way up to North Long Beach, to be part of creation at the site, of using the studios. They'll come here.
You have the ability to come here and check out a field kit, a DSLR camera, lights, audio kit, everything that you need to produce the content to create a program for Padnet.
I have freelancers, contractors coming in, and I am building my business here. It has really made a difference between building my business from a home environment and building my business here in a professional environment that is very creative and collaborative and networking. We love WeLab's. We couldn't have done it without it.
I'm a part of Long Beach Tech, and we would really love to have more people involve themselves in the daily and weekly, monthly opportunities that present themselves at both WeLab's, Padnet.
The people and the energy here, there's so much technological knowledge, there's so much entrepreneurial spirit here, and it's a perfect fit. And we're really excited about all the possibilities that this satellite is going to bring.
Welcome back. I'm Derek Simpson, the host of Padnet Presents. Before we went to break, we were asking the councilwomen, what was it like being at that first council meeting in the council chambers? And right before we left, we had heard from Councilwoman Lena Gonzalez. But now we're gonna hear from Stacy Mungo about what it was like for you as well.
So, the first meeting at chambers was important. I think the one I would like to revert back to was the one before, which is the week of our inauguration. Our first council meeting was actually at the convention center and the theater. And I thought it was so powerful to see 2,000 members of our community together, to be there with us, to see our first motion, second, and our first vote. Because they had been a part of a very lengthy process this year. And to have so many positions and such voter involvement, and the way that we united people behind us in volunteer brigades to walk on Long Beach, to get our message out. For them to have the opportunity to sit in that theater with all of us there, it just gave me such a sense of pride for our community. We know that people are at home watching the council meetings, but that was a meeting where they could actually be a part of it. And I thought it was really just a powerful moment about uniting a community behind new leadership.
And if I remember correctly, there was only one vote, or one item. And that was for our Vice Mayor position, right? Yeah. So, which is Asuj Lohenthal, which would be the fourth lady of our city council. When you think about it, would it go back to that first one as well, or would it be in council chambers?
I think for me, it was council chambers, because by then I'd had a week to kind of accept the fact that this, this was happening, you know, it was really happening. But I remember sitting there, and, you know, I'm extremely, I'm a very sappy person, and I tear up like crazy. I mean, I just always have been that way. And I remember really having to hold back, because I looked to my right and I looked to my left, and I was just so proud of the demographic of our city council. I learned how to speak English at the age of seven. I know that our mayor also learned how to speak English late in life. I am a mother. I am a woman. I am a wife. And the fact that I had the privilege and the opportunity to be there alongside other people that were similarly situated, I mean, just the diversity of the group, I was very proud. I was very proud of the women, every single one of us. And I think that's a strength that we all share. I'm very, no matter how we vote on things, I'm very proud of them. Because I know that they get asked questions during a campaign that sometimes men don't get asked. And, and I'm very proud that they were there, sitting alongside me. I'm very proud of the minority group among us, who maybe had obstacles or immigrated to this country, because I understand firsthand what they went through. So it was just this really great sense of just what a wonderful nation we live in, that someone like me would have the privilege to do this kind of service.
I think you bring up an interesting point that I would like to maybe ask all of you about. And that's just, do you perceive that there will be a greater sensitivity, given that there are now more women on city council, to issues that, like you said, if it was a guy, maybe they wouldn't have been asked a certain thing in terms of a question or to do certain things. But do you think that maybe there is that possibility for a greater sensitivity when issues come to families and those of low income, et cetera?
I hope so. Absolutely.
I hope so. Because if not, it's about us doing our due diligence and framing the questions a different way. Because, I mean, we've been asked, I know I have been personally asked by media, questions that I think that, you know, well, would you ask that of our male counterparts? So it's us doing some work, but also, I hope, yes, I really do hope that we start to hear more sensitivity from our end, and then also just from outside perspective on, on issues.
And I think a new level of respect as well. There are certain things and certain stereotypes in society that we definitely break. I think that we've had a couple jokes at council, both at our first retreat, there were some jokes about sports teams and things like that. And then they were like, "Well, maybe we should change the analogy for the ladies." And I'm like, "I was a sports director for the YMCA for a long time. I'm pretty sure I know my penalties and my..."
I know nothing about sports, by the way. I don't wanna mislead the public.
However, she is a soccer mom. And so soccer moms balance checkbooks of $3 billion a year and make good decisions about public safety. And those are jokes that go on amongst us, and we're friendly about it. And it reminds each other that we can be both a soccer mom and an elected official representing people. Both a woman and someone who understands football and hockey and, you know, these, these important parts of who we are as a country.
Just the sense I get, just talking to you in this conversation, it's like more approachable. It's not like it's those people behind the dais that make all these decisions. It's, hey, they're one of us, you know? They understand what we're going through as a community. I would think that that would lend itself to you being more engaging in your districts as well as making decisions that are right on point with what people are concerned about. Would you agree in some way?
I would, and I would, I would hope that that's the case, and I would hope that that's the takeaway. I mean, I will tell you, just in the almost eight weeks that we've been in office, that there are people who are, there are always going to be people who are gonna criticize what you do, and, and they're, they're not gonna be happy. But at the end of the day, one of the reasons I ran is because, you know, I'm a member of my community. I'm nothing more. I'm nothing more than a member of my community. You know, and I wanted to be the person that would bring the voice of the community to council. So, you know, I always say, "I'm of the people. I'm like you. I play on the same fields with my kids and all that." And so I think it's important that people feel like they can have something in common, you know, with their council member. Because I don't wanna ever feel like we're above anybody, and we're not, you know, so...
The moment you become above, the decisions you make are for the wrong reason.
That's right.
When you think about victories, I mean, it's only been eight weeks, but was there ever that moment where you were like, "Yes," you know? Whether it be, I know when Stacy, when you and I last saw each other, it was, you were trying to figure out how to get furniture for your office. I mean, that could be a victory in itself, just little things like that, just getting everything coordinated. But what comes to mind? Any short-term victories that you're like, "Yes, you know, right, right things are happening right now"?
Yeah. I would say, for me, Tuesday was a huge victory. There are things that council and elected officials have chose not to bring to the forefront because of their fear of their perception. And Councilmember Price had the courage to make some comments about residential burglaries and the numbers. And those are things that maybe our predecessors weren't so interested in knowing, because they were afraid of what that might say about their community, or whatever reason that it is. And one of the things that I would like to address, and I don't want to keep it behind closed doors, is our opportunity to grow revenue streams in Long Beach. And while I recognize that it's scary to say our deficiencies in areas that we are not striving in, it was a conversation that I felt needed to be had. And while I was encouraged to maybe just keep it in committee, I wanted to bring it to the full council. It's fine if it goes to committee, but it's really important that we talk about what we can do to embrace our business community. Because if we don't, we will not be able to pay, to pave our streets, to trim our trees, and to maintain our staffing with our public safety.
I would like to put in a word too, for when you talk about embracing the business community, the nonprofit community.
Absolutely.
As well, in terms of what agencies like mine do throughout the city that offer a tremendous service in the communities that we work in. When you think about the balance, I was just imagining, you talk about balancing soccer mom, or you're working for the county, and Lena, you have a family and work. What, what routine have you had to adjust to be able to keep all this going? Because you have other lives outside of council. How do you do it?
Well, that's a question that I'm asked often, and I actually have...
Let me come up with another one.
Well, no. And you know what? And my answer is always, and I hope people don't take it the wrong way, I get a little bit righteous about it. And I say, "I do it the same way everybody else does it." It is a part-time job by charter, and most, everyone has other job commitments. And so it's, it's all about managing your time. I mean, I would have to say that I have the equivalent of a PhD in time management. And yes, I do have a definite routine. I, I work on council business from seven to eight every morning, 12 to one, 5:30 to 6:30 if I don't have an evening meeting. And I respond to emails from nine until midnight every night. That's been my routine every single day since I took office. I have office hours every Saturday morning. So I have a routine that works well. And it's all about, for me, scheduling my family time in a way that's non-negotiable, because that's an important aspect of my life. And that's, for me, that's huge for balance.
Boundaries for you as well, I would imagine, Stacy.
Well, I'm fortunate that I have a long commute to LA every day. So I do a lot of constituent outreach via phone calls and returning messages, and calling other council members, and talking about items. It's always good that we each know each other's schedule, because Suzy and I know when we can catch each other, and Lena and I know when we can catch each other, and the same is true of Rex and Al, and the whole gang. We kind of all know each other's schedules, and when it's convenient, a quick text message to say, "I'd like to talk to you about item 16," and know more about this or that or the other. And that's all friendly, and we respect each other's time and boundaries. And then I'm also very fortunate that a lot of my community are in their senior years. And so I have to flex between both weekend hours, evening hours, and daytime hours. Because a lot of our seniors don't drive at night. I've put together office hours on Friday during the day at our field office, so that they have that kind of access. And then also, we've moved it around to different businesses that are on some of our bus routes. Because we need to be understanding that as our population ages, not all of them drive anymore, and they have to use public transportation. One of my senior citizens ladies was telling me that she wants to explore the difference between taxi cabs and Uber. And I thought that was very neat, that our, our community is moving with us. And we're a very technologically savvy group of council members. And I think that that's gonna trickle into our community, especially as we roll out citywide Wi-Fi.
That's great. Lena, we have about a minute before our break. What would you say from that perspective?
It's tough. You know, we have a family. I have a 13-year-old. So he has piano lessons, and he surfs, and he's really artistic. So it's keeping him, you know, in line, and making sure that routine never stops, and interrupting that routine, that's a priority for me in my family. But, you know, yeah, it's, it's a lot of constituent work. And right now, my, my important and only role as a council member. And so I, Monday and Tuesdays are packed usually with meetings for me, and the rest of the days are for the dinners and the events and the meetings, you know, off-site, and just getting out in my, my community as much as possible, so...
So my saving grace in this, then, Suzy, is not so much that I ask you that same question, but that by you guys talking about it, people got to hear, hopefully, that you do all have a routine. And as a result of those individual routines, you've found ways to synchronize with each other, to be effective. And I think that's a powerful thing as well. When we come back, we're gonna take one more break. And we're going to share a bit more insight with these wonderful city council persons that we have, that are representing our city, and you and me, in ways that we've never imagined before. We'll be right back.
Here, live in the mix at the Pacific Ballroom here at the Long Beach Arena.
I think it's one of the most spectacular things we've had in Long Beach for years and years and years and years. This space looks like you could do anything.
I think it's already created a buzz and an action and excitement for the downtown area.
Welcome back. I'm Derek Simpson, and we're enjoying a conversation with three of our council persons here in the city of Long Beach, all of which happen to be ladies that are very involved, not only in their respective jobs and families, but very involved in terms of leading us in a very special way here in the city of Long Beach. And the question that I come back to you with is, you've had all sorts of questions asked of you, both personally and professionally. And as you were saying earlier, Suzy, you know, you just do it, right? But what is it about your district, or what is it about the city of Long Beach, that in these eight weeks, you've really learned more about, that you want the rest of the city and the rest of the county and nation to know for that matter? I'm always finding myself speaking up about Long Beach. Well, we're half a million people, almost, and we're, you know, a city that would anywhere else have three TV networks, and we would have an NFL team, and we're larger than New Orleans. But what would you say from the council district? I'm very proud, and I'm sure others are, but what would you like to let people know that you're, you're proud of?
Well, what I've always been proud of, and what I've confirmed to be true since I've been on the council, is that there are amazing, wonderful things going on in the city of Long Beach. And we are a community that is rich with diversity, rich with programming, and so open to potential. I think in terms of my district, there are many projects that are happening in my district that are going to improve the quality of life for the residents. And although we often hear about issues because people have complaints or something they're unhappy with, there's a lot of great things going on. We've got this great new Belmont Pool facility that we're building, we're redesigning the whole zoning scheme for the area of Second and PCH that has been an issue for the community for years. We're repairing necessary infrastructure. There is a lot of great things happening in my district and citywide that I wish people would know more about.
It's interesting you say that, because when we launched PadNet, it was ironic that I was in front of the media saying that unfortunately, when Long Beach is covered by our regional media, all we hear about is murder and mayhem. And so we want this, as PadNet, to be something that can get out the positive that happens. That very same day in the press telegram, I was above the fold, below the fold, was murder and mayhem, and all the media of LA was here. When you talk about your district or the city, Councilwoman Mungo, what would you say?
I would say that having gone on vacations around the world, I try to take back and come back to Long Beach from a visitor's standpoint. One of the things that I've done differently is that my website at stacymungo.com doesn't only include events that are in my district, it includes events that anyone sends me from anywhere in the city. Because I truly feel that you could spend every weekend of the year going to a different event, museum, the aquarium. We have enough here that a family could literally pack every weekend with culture and diversity. And the drive-through Long Beach really is reflective of one great city made of many, many small communities, and each of those communities has many different types of events that embraced either their culture, or their demographic, or the different priorities that they have, whether it's sports or music. We have so much going on. And so I've really appreciated partnering with our nonprofit organizations and our local businesses, that they send us that information, so there's one hub. And we are working really hard to upgrade the city's website, and eventually, hopefully, that will be something that they have. But in the interim, I think it's been great for people on the fifth district side of town to get outside of their bubble. And I think that we are demonstrating that in the way that we're working together. Councilwoman Gonzalez and I are going to an event together in the future. Councilwoman Price and I went over to her side of town and judged the Sandcastle Building Competition, and Councilwoman Lowenthal came to my side of town for the Community Garden Party. And so we're going to things in each other's district and partnering and showing our constituents, there's so much more than my 11 square miles of the city.
Now, Councilwoman Gonzalez, I mean, first district, I often hear about how the West Side is overlooked, and, and people take for granted all the great things that happen, the great families. I love what you were just saying, Councilwoman Mungo, one great city, many small communities. And I think that that's reflective also in the constituents that you represent as well.
In the first district, I have probably one of the most complex districts, because we have so many different cities in one district. We have the Port of Long Beach, the West Side industrial area with some of the highest sales tax revenue, American-made goods, generational, family-owned businesses out there, downtown, very high-income earners, our artists, our musicians, and then central neighborhoods, some of our toughest neighborhoods in the city with low, you know, high poverty rates, low income, but very culturally diverse. And so I have to tackle all of that. But I would say just regionally, it's true, our city is worth the investment. We're, you know, we're worth coming to establish a business, we're worth raising a family here, we're worth all of that. And often when you see the LA Times, or you see the LA news, local news, it's often about Los Angeles, and then we're an afterthought. So it should be, you know, we're doing a lot of things that are cutting edge, we should be on, you know, on stage first.
Well, know that here at PadNet, that's our objective, is to be sure, and that's why this show was so important to me personally, because I knew that there was a different day, I knew there was a different energy because of my interactions with you one-on-one. And to have you all here at one time, I knew would be special, and it's certainly proven to be so. When we think, yes?
I like to challenge the idea that us computer-savvy women can be the media. We Twitter, we Facebook. The new streaming video that we're using in Long Beach is Tout, and we encourage everyone to get online, because you can select your own media sources, and you can hear from us directly. You don't have to go to a newspaper to hear what we're saying. We want to communicate directly with you, and you can communicate directly with us. And so as much as I appreciate the great work of journalists, I think that we can drive the conversation by the things that we're doing here every single day.
Absolutely. That's an excellent point, and, and we would love to get those avenues of communication out so that more people know that. Because as you said, we, with social media and, and the internet now, there is all sorts of options that we didn't have before. We're now in the month of September, as this program is being recorded. When we look towards the end of 2014, how would you see us crossing the finish line as a city? Is there anything that stands out in your mind that we should look forward to, either from your district perspectives or from the collective council perspective?
I think from the third district, the next few months are going to be critical for us in terms of the Belmont Pool and getting public input. Citywide, I think, starting the dialogue about the Civic Center is something that's going to happen next week on the 16th, and seeking public input, and we're going to have a lot of opportunities for public input. But going into 2015, I expect those discussions to be very robust.
Anything for you?
I think that the first part of us talking about making decisions citywide and not making them district by district is the part, the first step. And I think that the next step is putting together that vision and that plan, a plan that we make decisions by, so that we're not making decisions one, 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 without them being interconnected and acknowledging their impact. Because a lot of times, there are, there are policies that are very important, and the unintended consequences of the timing of those policy implementations, or the strategy behind how they get implemented, can cause unintended consequences, like our current situation with leaking sales tax revenue. And so while each decision along the way independently looked like a good idea, if we are not sitting together behind a united vision of what the city will look like in 10 years, then we wouldn't be doing the people right. And so I think that we've all committed to this, and we're definitely, by the end of next year, by the end of the fiscal year, going to be in a position to do that for the residents.
Right. From your perspective, anything you want to share?
The Civic Center is huge. It incorporates my district. I think it's something that the whole city can be a part of, it's not just a first or second district issue. It's exciting. We'll be having forums and study sessions in every part of the city, which is amazing, unprecedented, unheard of. But in addition to that, I think our budget process, you know, what we've implemented two weeks ago, we need to make sure it's, it's going through. So our Economic Development and Property Bureau, our Historic Preservation Officer, we need to hold ourselves accountable to make sure that we're, we're rolling those out in appropriate manners.
And I know that I had the honor of being asked by our mayor to be on his transition team, and so there were maybe 17 to 20 of us involved with that, that came up with a plan that was just recently released as well. So I would hope that that plan is also available to council, so that we as a community can feel that we weren't just asked to be on a transition team, but that we are a part of something that's going to really have longevity in the community. So I'm looking forward to working with you on that. Speaking of our mayor, I know that Councilwoman Gonzalez has had the honor of working with him over the years, but what, what excites you about working with our new mayor?
Well, I've known Robert for over 20 years. He was student body president after I was student body president, which means I'm older than him. But...
You keep bringing this up.
I do, I do. It's my issue. I get it.
She looks lovely.
I'm in denial that it's happening. But I, you know, I really respect the mayor's vision, and I think he's going to bring some, some great needed change to our city. His desire to bring us more up-to-date in terms of technology and how we are communicating with people is commendable, and I think he just brings a fresh, new, youthful energy to council, and I think that's a great thing.
I think that's shared by many people throughout the city and outside of the city as I talk as well. From your perspective, Stacy?
I think a few key things that he's done that have set an excellent tone. For those of us who know the history of the fifth district, the fifth district and the mayor's office before my time and before Mayor Garcia's time, they didn't get along. And so early on, it was a big win for my district that Robert came out to one of our biggest events, which is Concert in the Park. And dozens and dozens of people came up to me, "You get along with the mayor? Oh my gosh, this is going to be great." So we're going to have that collaborative environment, and I think it's also really important what he's done with the staff. He's met with the port staff, he was out at Animal Control yesterday, he's been with the city hall staff and the city clerk staff, and, and talked with them about their priorities as well. Because as we are part-time council members studying policy and direction, he's the one on the floor, five days a week, communicating and integrating our visions and implementing it into the system through the executive branch. And so his tone is something that I'm just so passionate about.
Something that, as you're saying that, it kind of flashes me back to Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Mayor O'Neill, in that she was considered this, you know, sort of cheerleader for the city and consensus builder. Sounds like I hear elements of that, that he's a consensus builder in terms of how he gets along, not only with you guys on the council, but also with the various districts and people in the community as well, from your perspective. I know the relationship changes now.
He's my constituent, can you believe it? So I have an interesting role here, but he's my constituent, you know, which is interesting. But he and I, I mean, we, I've worked with him for five years, but now as a council member, it's just been great knowing that we can all get along with him. His collaborativeness, his attention to detail when it comes to education, I think, is very important. He's an educator himself, so that's huge. Technology is important, but also I think he is a consensus builder, and we're going to continue to see that. And also his background in media will be very helpful for our city.
I know that there's been a big focus on the technology in the city, and you mentioned earlier, Stacy, the upgrade of the website, and we're talking about Wi-Fi throughout the city, and I believe there even changes suggested inside the city staff as well in terms of technology services, et cetera. When you think about, I know your relationship is, is great amongst the three of you, and working with the rest of the council, I know earlier we were talking about how cool it's been for you guys to, to work together. Any observations you'd like to share in that regard, in terms of, it's a young council, not going back there again, but I know there are some people who were already on council before, that, how is that, that blend of new and old coming together? Or new and experienced?
Great, great. I mean, I think, I genuinely, I mean, I mean this from the bottom of my heart, I respect every single one of my council colleagues and consider them all a friend, and feel that I can call upon them at any time. Again, we may not always agree, I want them to do what they believe is best for the city, and I'm always going to respect them when they do that. And beyond that, I think we're going to be fine.
Business is all about relationships, and it sounds like you guys are building great relationships. Anything you would like to share as well, Stacy?
I would say that each of us has found something that we can partner with. I know that Councilmember Austin and I are both really passionate about enhancements to the lawn removal program, and Councilmember Richardson and I are both passionate about libraries, and Councilmember O'Donnell and I share some parks, and we cross over. And so I think that we've each found a couple things to collaborate on that will start that dialogue for our constituents. Because our constituents need to see, not only do we collaborate with the mayor's office, but we collaborate with one another. And so I think that that's been a huge step, and as we bring those motions forward to council, and constituents see the impact, I think that they'll be very appreciative of this new collegial environment that we're going to work together in.
Right, makes all the difference. Thank you for doing that.
I think we also have very unique backgrounds, each of us. So we come with an expertise that none of us have. I mean, public safety, the budget process, I mean, there's so many different, unique perspectives on the council, and it's very valuable when we're coming together and discussing important items for our city.
We're asking you questions, but what would you like to see of us? You know, let's, let's speak in an I statement for nonprofits, and specifically agencies like Long Beach Community Action Partnership. What can we do proactively to engage and be more of a resource to your districts and to you even maybe personally, as you go about coming up with strategies for your districts?
I'll start, because I come from a very long length of years in the nonprofit industry. And there's a lot of criticism in the city of LA City Council related to the ways that they often designate certain properties and communities for nonprofits. And I think that what nonprofits can do to help us is, we know your value. We see it every day, because we're at events, we're talking to constituents in those communities. But what we need your help with is the quantifying factor. Because quantifying it and being able for us to advocate for you and be the cheerleaders of nonprofits, especially at this time where we have a lot of properties that we need to talk about for RDA, it's not good for the city to have vacant land at all. And what we'd like for some of it to be developed, it's, it's a timing issue, things have to be developed in good order. And in that meantime, let's find value to give to constituents through partnerships with nonprofits. And so that's what I would ask of nonprofits, is to be able to quantify those things.
I have a minute and 30 seconds left. I'd like to give each of you 30 seconds, and I'll close with 30.
I was just going to say, collaborating amongst each other too, because I think there's often great opportunities that come that, you know, everyone's kind of having at it. So it'd be good to have more collaboration amongst yourselves to be able to streamline some, some processes for us.
And that's something that we can take an I statement to as well.
And you've done really great at.
Yes.
Well, I had the privilege of attending the Long Beach Nonprofit Breakfast, and I was surprised to hear that 10% of our workforce here is employed by nonprofits. I mean, nonprofits are a major employer in the city of Long Beach. And like I've said from day one, and I said the last time I was here doing an interview during the campaign, was, you know, really nonprofits have a specialty, and your, your area of specialty is where you're the expertise, you're the expert, you have the expertise. So I always say, help me help you. What is it that I can do, that we can do as an office, to help you promote what you're doing? Because what you're doing is providing a service to my community as well. And so I, I really believe strongly that you, as an expert, need to tell me what you need, and I will do what I can to make it happen.
Well, you've been a wonderful guest. I can't thank you enough. I know it was like herding butterflies to get us all on the same schedule, but we made it, and I think it's well worth the effort. Two takeaways for me, help me help you is a powerful statement that we should all consider, and one, great city, many small communities, is also something that we can all take away. I want to thank you for taking the time out of your day to join us for this very special show. I'm Derek Simpson. Thank you for joining us on PadNet Presents.